To tell the order of the regulars. Board meetings with Soul Community Schools for June. Is the mission of the Soul Community Schools to engage each and every student in rigorous and relevant learning experiences. Experiences maximizing achievement through exceptional teaching. Chris, can you call the roll?
Yes, well.
Here.
Rockholtz.
Here.
Coons.
Here.
Alaska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Uh, Ben.
Here.
All here.
Hey. Welcome everyone who chose to come and hang out with us in a nice June evening and skip out on whatever. Fun activities are going on. I think there's a baseball game when I drove through, so. So, Russian achievements, Davis.
Just, I guess we talked about just celebrating the end of the year. It was really highly successful. We had a great graduation day. Um, our summer sports off to a great start and um. We really had a good three days of professional learning too, so. Good school years.
Let's continue to hear good things about uh. About graduation ceremony. People like the outdoor venue um. And they like the length and ceremony, particularly people who went to longer ceremonies elsewhere and then came here. I heard from some grandparents, it's like this was much better than my other grandchild. So, um. And Silver's was appreciative that I kept my speech fifty-five seconds from the end of the uh, you may be seated to, to when I uh, sat down, so. He did not believe I could always speak without words, sorry.
Fifty-five hours.
I would get you probably right. Um, district administrative reports, uh, focus on learning.
Oh, okay, for focus on learning, we kind of, you got me.
Three people. I'm just moving along.
What we wanted to do was dedicate this time, focus on learning and, and uh, the admin reports into kind of one. Um, one agenda item to where. Uh, you know, we've got, we have our strategic plan, goals which are overarching, and then each building. Uh, narrows that down specific to their building and they've got uh, their goals and some metrics and so. Each principal, we're going to just um. Have them kind of walk the board through just a few data points.
Sure.
Uh, from the end of the year that relate directly to their plan on a page which supports our strategic plan. So however, whatever order we're in.
Well, I'll go ahead and just start with I S A S data. Um. This year, we, we took it the same. We took it during the same window of time, March twenty-seventh, April fifteenth, which we've done the last four times we've done this. Uh, so we come back from um, spring break. Take a week, get back at it, and then we, we roll right into the Iowa statewide assessment student progress. Understanding that this is one data point at one point in time of the year, but it is a measure that the state looks at and we also look at, take seriously as well. Because it, it. It is a part of multiple data points that we look at across the district. So I was gonna take some time this evening, just look at it from a, um, standpoint of, from the district lens. Uh, I provided you with some slides or these slides as well, so this first slide is really taking a look at. Um, just kind of the overall achievement, so put together a table. Looking at advanced numbers of kid, or kids, number of kids in advanced, number of kids proficient, number of kids not proficient, each grade level. E L A, math and science, uh, third through eleventh grade, again, just sort of a reminder. Take the reading, writing and math portion of the assessment. Um, fifth, eighth and tenth grade are the only ones that take the science in addition to the reading, writing and math. Uh, again, it's untimed, um, which if you recall in the back of the day. That you took time tests for, Iowa test of basic skills or elder assessment, so. Um. When we take a look at this uh, information. Uh, again, just kind of breaking it down, so for example, I'll just kind of pick on um. Sixth grade E L A, sixth grade math. You go over in sixth uh, grade E L A. There are eighteen students in advanced proficient, seventy-eight student proficient and only nine students not proficient. Um, which in sixth grade, a hundred and five students took that assessment. And then kind of breaking it down into percent, uh, percentages, we had ninety-one percent who were proficient. In the sixth grade and nine percent. Um, so just kind of walk through that a little bit, then, then just some initial observations. Uh. This is kind of. This isn't the official, official data, this is kind of my breakdown as I went through all of the data and kind of calculated for by hand. Um, across the district. I'm hoping in the next. Few weeks, the official data will come out from Pearson. Um, with some official, more official reports. Additionally, with I S A S data, this data is included in also an apparent portal. Which we devised a plan, um. Within power school, the parents access that portal and gives them your, gives your secure password for your, your uh, students. Um. Data stand from I S A S, so that's just a quick. Um. Overview of that. But just initial observations, you know, eighty-six percent and above proficient in E L A, six through eleven. That's pretty, been pretty consistent. Eighty-one percent above proficient in math, six through eleven. Fourth grade math, um, is at fifty-eight percent, um. That needs a little bit deeper examination, which that's, Mel has really been talking and discussing with her leadership team as well as. Um, with us at the district office and. We have several things we're looking at for next year to kind of put in place and tighten some things up a bit. Um, so we're.
What's that?
You know what they were last week or the.
They were.
As a cohort?
Yeah.
The next, the next.
Right with.
Um. And if the last year's fifth grade class. And we can even compare, so last year's.
There, you're talking cohort.
So I'm at five and four, right? So they were at eighty, seventy-nine percent.
Yeah. Right here, seventy-one, sixty-seven.
Fourth grade. It's fourth grade.
Third grade.
Did you have them compared by your? Blue is eighteen, nineteen, right? Or no?
Yeah, blue is eighteen, nineteen, red is twenty, twenty-one. So yeah, that's kind of your cohort data.
Oh, okay. So we look at fourth grade math, that tells us two, two previous years.
Right.
Previous year and two years before that.
And this was the second year they've been online. Yes.
So, yes, oh, I sense, I sense, yes, yes.
That we took it.
Pretty good.
Um.
When we get Pearson data, this will go down. A degree to get to the domain level, correct? So we'll be at the high level, subject of E L A versus math, you'll be able to.
Right, E L A.
Be the different.
E L A has your writing and your.
And reading, right?
Yeah, that's how it's working.
So it would be, I don't know if it's possible, but when we get the Pearson data, it's only you did this by hand, it has to be done. Again, but when we get the Pearson data to. Do the same chart.
Yeah.
Down. A level.
Down into breaking apart into domains, you mean writing versus reading.
And the different domains to ban this one. Because then that's really good, I hope you understand what are your gaps are.
Right.
Not.
The challenge with the, the Pearson I S A S data is that. They don't break it down into those domains, they do it by student. But they don't do it. As a whole district. Yeah, that's the frustrating part. And I've not seen, and I've not seen, and we've not seen a report yet that has been done. So we just get a basic overview. Kind of uh, a growth report, the growth report that's coming.
Yeah, and it's pretty general, so if you look at an individual student report. It might tell you that your student scored high in. I'll pray, I believe that's in number sense, but it won't tell you the specifics of that. And it's typically by range, so like if you and I scored similarly, my report's gonna say it's gonna be good for, does that make sense? It won't be super specific to just.
It might be within, it'll be within the. Achieving, yeah, be.
High.
Where we used to be with the old, of the old assessment, it would actually, you could actually break it down by question, either analysis, all that. This is. And partly think they're, because they're starting to go through that adaptive task, I think, is what they're doing.
I'll be with my person. Last.
Ask. Cause the only thing that shows up on our, on our, yeah, platform is what I said, I just.
Captain, I have a question.
Yes.
I know I have a question already, I know I have an app that. That's how we follow that. Um. Now, does the gathering is though, right?
Yes. So. And for math, next year, we're going, we're, we're using N W A math testing K eight.
Yeah.
Which is gonna be, I think, a huge, I think, change of course, so.
We'll just give it.
Yeah.
Like it, like specifics.
Yeah, give us growth reports and it's not just one time a year, it's over the course of the year.
And it predicts to the outcomes of the.
I S A S.
Assistant, so like in winter, you can predict where these numbers will be, when you're still gonna have to take this test. So.
Um, real quick, between seventy-three percent and seventy-eight percent proficient in all areas, third through fifth grade, um, and we're. Do you examine very closely with this achievement? Science proficiency, um. Has been kind of interesting. We typically are above the state average in science and in scoring, so when we look at science proficiency. Um, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the state average was, for fifth grade was fifty-eight percent, eighth grade was sixty percent and tenth grade was fifty-two percent. Um, district in twenty twenty-two, fifth grade was sixty-eight percent. Eighth was eighty-one percent, tenth was eighty, eighty-three percent. And we actually grew this year to maybe have more students proficient, so. In science, which was kind of, which was somewhat of a goal areas, especially for fifth grade. Um, S I S has been doing a lot of work with science and examining some curriculum and trying some different things. Beyond what we traditionally have done as the vast science skills, which. There's extra views on that, whether they align or. Use, uh, new generation science.
We purchased a lot of. Nonfiction texts, a lot of science, nonfiction texts, so that we can fuse them into our literacy. So that kids have our reading nonfiction as well as fiction into our reading block, and so we built a lot of. And we, we, how we chose those texts is all the work that the, the teachers did unpacking those science standards, figuring out what it is that we, we need to teach and then. Um, we went and ordered the necessary nonfiction so that those could be part of our reading block, so. We don't teach science in isolation, but we try to infuse it throughout the day and, and to literacy.
Then just the breakdown of the data graphs that we have. And just studying stores will get it. From eighteen, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. Very long with the Holly's.
So. Alright, so our um, first thing on the page goal was around literacy, that ninety-five percent of students would meet. Grade level benchmarks, um, according to the benchmark assessment. Um, schoolwide, at the end of the year, um, seventy-eight percent of students were. On grade level or above, and I just broke that down by grade level below that, so you'll see. Sixty-seven percent in third grade. Um, compared to seventy-nine percent. Um. In kindergarten, first grade was a little bit higher. Um, so we'll continue with that same goal for the next year, um, looking at. Where our kiddos falling out. Um. When we look at the benchmark assessment, some pieces of literacy that we want to tighten up and then some pieces of violence. Um, so we. Have some things in place to address that. Um, and that means so. So. If. I'm reading this correctly, you're not hitting a goal, but rather than you are correct. Next one is our writing goal, so this year we did not have, um. We not have baseline data to know really where we hunted in the past. Um, looking at end of unit on demand assessments. Um, so knowing that we would want eighty percent of our kids at least meeting grade level, that's what we set the goal at. Um. After doing some more talking and talking with Mel and digging into, um, kind of late views. History, learning that. There was some work that we need to do, that actually should have been a precursor to. Setting the goal as it was. So. Are you see, the resource we're using is set a little bit higher to say if they're meeting. Um, the proficiency is actually higher than what the grade level standard is. And so S I S has done work to. Calibrate that and to know where they would need to fall in the on-demand assessment in order to be meeting. Grade level standard, that was work late view has not done. So we will, we are. Doing that work now, we started that in our last days before. The end of this school year this year, um, and just calibrating that to see, okay, what, unpacking some of those writing standards. What do those say? What do, um, kids need to be able to do and then where does that fall on that assessment? So if we were, so looking at this data, there. Would be a percentage of students that was scored developing on this, that would actually be proficient according to grade level standard. If I explain that clearly. No.
So are you, are you saying Lucy's standards are higher than.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Then who's the other standard, there's just, those are core standards.
Of course.
I will.
They're meaning that they developed. On their on-demand, this is from Lucy Hawkins, the on-demand assessment.
Correct.
And that cut score is higher, is higher than. What? Here's your state. To them, grade levels, and what is the state standard grade level using? To determine them. When you look at Iowa Common Core, it will lay out like at fourth grade level or at kindergarten level, this is what's expected of a student in their rating. But when we look at how we're assessing our.
Good descriptions.
Often when we look at your descriptors for those structure development conventions. What Lucy is doing is typically a grade level higher, sometimes two. Than what the common core standard is.
Mm-hmm.
So late, late view is still working on some of that work. S I S has done a good portion of that, but we're going back and recalibrate to recalibrate, yes. So. What you'll see on our plan on a page for next year is to even not understanding to look at those writing progressions. To unpack those standards, to utilize the assessment and then looking at what are kids doing on those, um. Post-on demands in relation to what the Lucy Rubrick says, but then where does that fall in the grade levels? Um, our wellness pillar, um, we had that eighty-five percent of students will score within the normal range, we met that, um. In every grade other than kindergarten at the end of the year. Um, or I'm sorry, at the beginning of the year, so in the fall, seventy-five percent of kids were in that normal range, but by spring, ninety-one percent of kids. Were, um, within the normal range on that D E S A. Um, when we look at. What we are going to be working with next year for the wellness pillar, you'll see, um, it's more implementation, we'll go to the next slide, Josh. So that Teach to Heal framework, the behavior interventionist, um, school-based therapy services, um, so lots. To implement next year in regards to wellness.
We're not administrative in this.
No.
Correct.
Correct.
We're gonna use the characters gone built into your two.
So we'll have to read baseline, but you're correct, yeah.
Well, there we go.
Alright, so for interview, looking at our literacy data, sorry, I have notes. Um, ninety-five percent of students reaching grade level benchmarks, but you've already seen on colleagues as well, um. Again, we were at seventy-eight percent as a school building, grade level or above, so we did not reach that ninety-five percent of students on the grade level. When we break it down, you can see grade level, um, sorry, seventy-one percent. Total, and then for the group of ten of those are above grade levels. And again, fifth grade eighty-six on or above, and fifty percent of those are above. Looking at next steps for us in reading, um, really looking at that collaboration component amongst special education and general education. Teachers so that we can help support those kids that are on the lower end. If you break that down a percentage, it did not do that for you, but a lot of those students are also receiving I E P support. Or are also receiving intervention supports through guidance, vetting, reading or L O I. And so we really wanna be bringing in our specialized teachers to help support that lower end of the spectrum. Um, in those conversations more frequently, they've already been attending data wall with us, but we really want to get that more. So just commonplace conversation, because they also have a lot of things that they can help. Bring strategies to that other middle group that's not just even specialized services.
Well.
What's happening now?
Flip tall up on that, cause of course I write notes and you, of course, answer the questions before I can ask them, but the, the other piece was, you know. With the growing district, I think one of the questions is always that transition and. It's, it's soon to, or something, do we keep track of that as a specialized group, which is, is it their first year in the district versus? Cause I, this is always my thing when we follow cohorts, like I follow a cohort, it's like kids come and kids go, and so the cohorts are never really still the same, and so. How do? Do we?
Um, I don't have that pulled out separately, no, typically we do find that kids that are new to the district. Often end up on our intervention team roster because there are. Some curve that maybe they have to catch up to, particularly in writing is where that typically happens. Um, but we also know like if they're coming in with an I E P in the beginning. Um, and then we always start with an assessment for them, like no matter what time of year it is, to know where the place is gonna improve, so. But I don't have those percentages.
I just, I just mainly was, that you guys were, was on your radar, cause something I was saying about, as we talk about, as we grow, it becomes an increasing challenge if we add. Thirty kids in a year, now I've got thirty kids that are not in the same spot as their peers are, they may.
Right.
Having moved as a kid a few times, it was always that, that challenge when you've switched schools was.
Beginning of the school year in fourth grade this year, I believe we picked up three or four kids.
Yep.
We picked up seven as a total in all of S I S to begin the year, and maybe one or two in the middle of the year, so.
So we have looked at this data before, you know, it's just like moving the kid from point A to point B, right, so if that kid starts at forty. You mean, I get to ninety-five, right? But our, that's the stuff that means going to me, right, and on this data, I want to know that we took forty to sixty-five. That means something to me, if the whole grade is still seventy-eight, but we're moving everybody. That's important to me, so I don't.
I'll wrap that up, because when we look at our S I S for the next year, when we talk as a, a leadership team and then also as a building wide and how the constructional team. We wanted to track that next year too. So we kept the ninety. We dropped it to ninety percent since we're still pretty far away from the ninety-five. Dropped it to ninety percent, but then also wanted to see that ninety-five percent of students are showing at these two levels of reading growth. Through the year. Something that we ran that as well. Um. Looking at writing. The goal was for eighty percent of fourth and fifth graders to meet both, uh, grade level on demand assessment scores. As a school, we were at sixty-two percent, I believe last year we were at fifty-seven percent, so we are growing. And getting stronger, um, I broke it down by grade level there for you. I think we've done a lot of really great work in writing, but we have more to do. We wanna continue with that converting focus as we move into next year. Um, and then building instructor, C L T time on Thursday afternoons for more of that data analysis and then making unit adjustments. So we've talked a lot about, there are things that we've noticed, either a larger group of students need or individual groups or strategy groups, even for writing. We wanna keep better track of that and have that focus for adjustments in those units, when we first rolled out, we see it soloing. Prior to my days here. That unit was pretty tight, but now that we're seeing some of those patterns over the course of years, like what is it that kids really always tend to need as a larger group? Let's build those into the units and take time to do those adjustments now. To help them, and that, so that's part of what we'll be doing. And ready. And then in math, um, eighty percent of fourth and fifth graders demonstrating high growth achievement levels in math. As measured by the math assessment, we did not have a baseline data for this because it was the first year we were taking math assessment. Um, when you look at it, I broke it down a couple of different ways so that you could see what we were currently at for growth. Um, we're currently at eighty-two percent, it showed growth through the year. However, meeting that high growth achievement level, which was the goal. We were at, um, thirty-two percent of our fourth and fifth graders, and you see the rate down there. Forty percent of fifth graders and twenty-four percent of fourth graders. We've talked a lot as a building team, we've, you know, brainstormed at the administrative table as well, like what were some of the vectors that have gone into? This math store, um, it's certainly not where we want it to be or where we're hoping it would be and. Um, really what I was anticipating for it to be, this was year two for S I S to be in the new perspective materials. Um, we had dream boxes on pilot for a couple of classes and then those kids that we identified for more. Um. More intervention needs, although not a formal intervention for them. Um, and so as we've really dug into some of this and had conversations around our tables, various admin or building tables. We're really looking at more of that small group component, so when you talk about math workshop, you talk about. What are those pieces and things that we can do to help kids build that fluency within their, um, numeracy? What are the things we can do to help them continue to practice the skills and the concepts that are being addressed and presented in their large group? And then how can we build an intervention time? We do that in reading really, really, really well, how can we also kind of piggyback off of that same model? In math, to be able to provide some of that. Um, and so the work that we're starting to do, and that would be a A five thing, is really looking at our unit group thing, where are the gaps that we now know? After a couple of years in, that we need to address. What are some areas that are really big, um, priority standards that maybe we don't feel like we're getting strong enough? And so let's pull those into some math workshops, but then also looking at how we can provide practice skills and intervention support. Through that math workshop and rotation of stations. So what are those stations going to be, digging into that, what resources might we have there? Um, we will have access for all students to have Dreambox next year. And then also we have purchased the Bridges Intervention System, so that we had kids that are in what we would call the red or on the far end. Um, really a large gap between efficiency. We can start looking at providing that intervention for them, and Bridges is the next thing that they can take that assessment and will pinpoint. Exactly where to start and help teachers and homework and spell. Building against various implements there to help register.
So what do you think? So wasn't the Bridge of Intervention System, you that Dreambox can't do, or the math assessment doesn't give you?
Mm-hmm.
Data.
So Bridges is really what I would consider a true intervention, whereas Dreambox is going to allow kids to work at their level and provide that practice and fluency. Whereas Bridges is going to be more specific to where. We might be missing this chunk, or maybe your understanding is only at a grade two readiness. Bridges is a teacher one-on-one instruction or small group instruction. Dreambox is more computer-based, so that's more of your assessment.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and using that Greenbox as a supplement to help some work, just give that, right, so. Maybe introduce some new concepts, that's the thing I think I heard you say the most, it's introducing some.
There's a lot of readiness for kids, a lot of readiness for. Uh, units.
I need something more than necessary, it would be interesting to see from that assessment within the period. We wouldn't have to take another assessment just to.
Bridges is not online.
If, if Bridges isn't online, it's more of a. Annual guide. And with this, do they provide a.
Well, it, what's we need to have.
No. A lot of. We're things to start. Which I think is the missing component to what we have right now. A lot of times in math, we have no idea where to actually start. Dreambox helping us, this is where we wanna start with Bridges. If we're going to do an assessment, maybe we'll have to do one quick check, this is where to start, Dreambox will help with that and Math will too. And then that way we don't have to spend time assessing where this.
Yeah, I think it is, I mean, it's more of a. So really.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah. And then our last goal was the wellness goal, we were looking at a hundred percent of fourth and fifth graders being able to be in at least one adult that they trusted at school. Um, the beginning of the year, we were at ninety-four percent, the end of the year, we ended up at ninety-four point nine percent, so we'll call it ninety-five. Um, the interesting thing on this one, and I'm gonna look at my notes, so I don't forget. Um, at the beginning of the year, those, that six percent of kids was nine students. That said, they didn't have one trusted adult. When I looked back through the spring data compared to the fall data, four of those nine kids now said that they had one trusted adult. Three of those nine kids said that they had two adults. And one even said he had five adults currently at S I S that he could trust. One still said Z. So the new set of students were a different set of kids, say, probably. Which was interesting, so we did have teachers go and just visit those students and say, hey. Can you talk to them a bit more about, you know, what your thoughts were? Someone was like, oh, I didn't really understand the question, so it was a little bit different, and then there were a couple that just said. I really just don't know who I talked to, so. Uh, we did follow up on them and then we'll be looking. I really just don't know who I would talk to, so, um, we did follow up on them and then we'll be looking to look for at the wellness piece. Next year in terms of. With the intervention, um.
So I wanted to hear both our ISS and math data. Two kind of different formats, and I'll hit the ISS part quickly because Josh has already hit. Basically all the, the numbers, uh, but I did wanna point out, um. In the literacy part, um, ninety percent's a pretty lofty goal, and we get three groups that um, are at or above it. Uh, that's really cause for celebration for our, uh, G L rates, and so I'm really proud about that. Um, and I did wanna include the state average, uh, probably more so than the, the math is illustrated, um. But when the rest of the states are at seventy, seventy-five and, and you're ninety, that's uh, we're not about. Um, and then when we look at the math, they have a next slide. What I wanted to illustrate with this is, um, when you look at that bottom twenty-one. Twenty-one percentile or lower, uh, about a small number of kids that we have that are really struggling. Um, and that's really uh, a testament to, to our interventions, not only in the middle school, but at intermediate and late youth that. Um, and some, some of those kids that are no longer in that category, um, and then interventions for a long. Longer period of time and track that uh, real closely. So we're proud of that.
I think, I think something interesting, we talked about briefly earlier, this was your last week was. A lot of schools, when there's a transition from an elementary setting to a middle school setting, like fifth to sixth. There's always, it's like the dip, they call it whatever the, that transition dip. For whatever reason, we don't see that here very often, in math, it goes the opposite.
This was the first year using decimals, right? So have we seen results of the fact?
In terms of the.
From that scene compared to year over year.
That over time, that would be in Josh's.
Oh, I was looking at math results, because this starts, this is.
First year.
Second year of math, right? We're in middle school.
Well, middle school, you've had.
We've had it.
Three years.
So you're, you're interested, your question is just to see the growth from year to year? Okay, so I'll hit, I think, I'll. I can go back. So to kind of wrap up the literacy piece, um. Those of you that have, um, been parents in recent years now, uh, with the forty book challenge, um. And when you think about a middle school kid reading a whole book. Every week, uh, that's pretty, pretty lofty in itself. Um, one of the way the numbers end up tracking out is some kids are reading two or three books during that week and. Uh, some of us didn't appreciate reading quite as much. Um, but that just, uh. The numbers that, that came back, uh, and even in, in eighth grade, when a hundred percent of kids read twenty-five books or more, that. That's pretty good, that's really good. And, um, looking at math, um, again showing the ISS data. Uh, when I met with Josh and Davis earlier, as, uh, and, uh, they had to draw my attention back to the. It, it won improvement, but also, uh, when you look at the state averages, uh, we're hanging them, um. Math as you go there, and now you see those numbers of kids that truly, truly struggle are about twice as much as what they were. In the literacy and. We're working hard at our math interventions, we're still behind. Uh, where we are with literacy, we're fighting the same struggle, we're setting the same systems up, um, we're just. Behind, so we're, we're working at that. And to Cassie's, um, point, when we look, uh, math does a really nice job of modeling growth. Uh, for kids and we should protect that all the winter and the spring. And, um, where our conversation to add is right now, it is, uh, obviously we want those bottom kids to come up. Uh, but we're starting to have that conversation of, um, looking at kids in, in the quadrant of low achieving, low growth. High achieving, high growth being an opposite one, and getting to kids not for those quadrants rather than. Just focusing on the strugglers or just focusing on the, the high achievers, so, um. We're looking at our, our start time and intervention time, um, as well as our success lives a little bit differently is. Um, you know, start time in the past, we'd have a literacy intervention going for six weeks, and while we did that. All the other kids were doing the same kind of literacy. They were all working on the fourth world talent, for example. Uh, then when we did a math intervention for six weeks, all the kids were, uh, were in the online activity related to math. Supporting our math goal, but it wasn't tailored to the student. And so by looking at, looking at things in these quadrants, we hope to foster kids a little bit differently during that intervention time. So one, one classroom can be doing some activity related to math while another group might be doing something. Um, more tag or gifted on the. And the, the other goal that, um, we have on our plan on page that's not included in. Data numbers is our, uh, SBVH efforts, um, and I just wanted to acknowledge. Um, our staff and their, their work with our SB, S. B E H planning in that, um, we have own staff or staff volunteer to, uh, be a part of our planning committee. We're looking at the higher use survey data, the. Initiative, there's one for learning data, um, what, what our kids need outside of the literacy math stuff.
Do we have the same? Goals for math? In the middle school, as we do for reading over ninety percent reaching. Am I missing the, I gotta go back to that? Is it just for ISS or is it on that?
Say that again.
Okay. So we're not hitting our ninety percent goal either. We are for reading, but we're not for math.
I'm asking, does math do, we need science? Do this, just so we don't hear that.
Alright. My easiest, just a little handout that maybe you'll help. Guide and discussion, then you can ask questions, do you think specific to some of the things, and so. The first two, it's just gonna be our plan on the page that we have this year, second one, something a little bit. Um. And then I'll have one more than that. Really three goals, and you can see them at the top of that page, both three goals, and then they connect. Each building priority, obviously, and that's how our plan on the page, um, kind of works. The goal of one was really, um. Addressing and making sure the majority of our kids, ninety-five percent participated in all of our ICAP activities. Those happen throughout the course of the year, sometimes in seminars, but more importantly throughout the year, in those half day, um. Planned out events that were connected to one of those five components. The current data, again, the data set that I'm presenting here tied directly to the. Success indicators and then the measures on the right side, so we had, uh, job shadows and internships, uh, plenty more students. Participated in an internship, and then we had six to seven, uh, job shadows compared to the year prior, it was a little bit higher, not much. Um, our, 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 our goal there is to get as many as possible, ideally, we would have every student walk away by the time they graduate high school. Um, either experience in a job shadow or in an internship. Um, right now, all our kids use Zello for both academic planning and their post-secondary planning, and that's, uh, directly. Tied to and connected with Power School now, so they sync and talk together, um. Mike Thompson has been, uh, a champion in that regard, um, working with both Zello and, uh, Power School to make sure that works. Efficiently, uh, eighth graders are starting to use Zello as well, it's an extension right in their Google suite, they can click on Zello, it'll pop up. And it's got all five components, again, um, specific to ICAP, career and academic planning, it's really called D cap now, cuz it's. More of a statewide district initiative as opposed to just at the secondary level. Um, and then thinking about our C C T C, that was another building priority, um, specific to this goal. Katie was in her first year, uh, has done an outstanding job, I'd say one of the celebrations, uh, for her work is. Regarding our FAFSA completion, so I wanted to share that with you, uh, back in. Twenty twenty, the end of May, there was fifty-nine percent of our students, um, the following year, there was fifty-six percent of our teams that had completed the FAFSA. And so at the end of this, this May, there was sixty-seven percent. Um, and last year there was seventy for the whole year of twenty twenty-two, so we still have the rest of this year to go. I don't know how many more kids will, um, will fill it out, but that's, that's great growth compared to prior to when we had the position. And that's been a focus for her, um, because she has to also report back on that to Kirkwood, and then. The, the federal government actually then takes that data because there's funding coming from the Fed, or that those positions were in the state of Iowa. She also wanted, um, to hear that. We're currently at forty kids that are registered for, um, academy, which is higher than it has been in the past at this time. Uh, the current fall, her, um, concurrent, that seventy-one students, um, with a total of three hundred and five credits, and that continues and will continue to go up. She shared some other data, but it really didn't make sense to me, um, and so if I tried to present it to you, it definitely won't make any sense. Yeah, survey data from our students, again, shows, um, uh, I would say a more positive, um. Vibe in regards to the, the work that we're doing with our ICAP, the, the activities, you know, Ben tried to speak to some of, some of those this year and. Um, compared to last year's as well, uh, we're right at fifty percent for our ninth and eleventh graders who participated in our ICAP. Planning, uh, conferences during January, um, the first year we did it was that. Uh, spring of, what did it, nineteen, that was the highest that we really. We really hit it that hard, I would say it hasn't been as, it hasn't, it hasn't been as high since, but we also shifted what we did with our sophomore, so we did more of an. Uh, an open house, we tried four different opportunities for them to come, there were six stations. Um, we had, I think it was right at sixty percent attendance there, that, um. That event, that was, that was pretty good, we thought that was a good first year approach to what we were doing. So the next steps, um, again, this, this came from. We have a, a student group or peer leaders, and then we have a principal's council that's a part of that. Um, they thought maybe it'd be good to add some students to the ICAP team, and again. It's not gonna, we don't wanna have the same kid that are involved in all the things, we're gonna get a different, you know, subgroup hopefully that aren't as involved in all the stuff. Um, so that's something we're gonna hope, and then we also wanna get some mid-school representation on there. Uh, maybe not at every single meeting, meet every week, but, um, that would be something. To improve on, really wanna get all parents access, right now it's just our class of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Because they were part of that sophomore, um, open house, and then, um, just more connection, I think, with what we're doing with. Career and academic planning. All part of the high school experience and whatever they do after that, but connecting it to all three of our building priorities a little bit more intentionally is something that our lead learning team has talked about. And then, um, one of the big things we're gonna continue to do is, um, find ways for all of our staff, regardless of what they teach as far as content, we're gonna be able to answer questions. But also coach kids as they're thinking about next steps, so, um, one of our. Better learning, um, days, we're gonna spend a good chunk of that with career conversations training that actually Grandford provides for, so that's gonna be. Uh, a highlight there, next step, please. Number two, um, so this was specific to data, uh, that we wanted to collect around the skills that we had identified. Um, tied to our portrait of bragging, and so I had shared all of that, I think in December, January with, with this team. Um, and from there then, what we did was we took, uh, all of that information. We turned it over to our collaborative learning team, so every, uh, content area, the, the teams looked at it. They examined what they thought was the highs and the lows, and then what next steps would look like. And really from, uh, the input that we got, and so I, I can kind of share, I'll pass these around, but each. Each teacher walks through a data analysis protocol, then they turn that in, and then I capture it all, and then I bring that back to our lead learning team. And then we look at next steps, and so really what we, what we captured was. We need to do something specifically with each department that's going to be intentional around one of those skills, there's. Three of them that were kind of ones that I would say, um, probably needed more, um, s- support or teaching around, and so they're gonna use. Um, time to start the school year to identify what that skill is. And then they're going to implement it throughout the course of, if it's a math class, they're gonna do it through the one that they teach the most, so if I'm in geometry, I'm gonna do the geometry. Uh, if it's an elective, they're gonna pick the one that the most, most kids are, are taking. Our, our skills have all been finalized, I don't know, Dr. Line's gonna share that at some point later, either tonight or whenever with our strategic plan, but. Um, that's something too, as we think about next steps, um, we really wanna make sure that we're communicating this well to all of our stakeholders, so. Whether it's our parents or community members, um, another next step, we're gonna be continuing, and this is more probably six, twelve, is refining. Our grading practices to really align more with a process-minded, earning-centered approach as opposed to an outcome-grade focused mindset, which is again. Really, really hard and gonna take a lot, a lot, a lot of. Um, goal number. Go back, did I have any ISS data on any of these? Cuz I wanted to share. Thought I had someone. I have it in the handout, was it under any of the? It's okay, it wasn't a goal, it was connected to ISS, but I wanted to share some of the ISS data.
It's probably on the slide three.
Yeah, so it is under, it is in a, under goal number. So grab that. This handout that I gave you, and Josh did already capture obviously the proficiency, but I wanted to highlight some of the takeaways. That, that we looked at, um, specifically to each grade level. So specifically, if you're looking at the ninth grade data on the top, hundred and twenty-five kids tested. As eighth graders, there were twenty-six students to the class of twenty twenty-six. That were not yet proficient, two of those are no longer enrolled, obviously I broke there, so it went from, you can tell, as you can tell, twenty-six to eighteen. Just a positive, we also saw a large number of students move from proficient to advanced for, for efficient. In eighth grade, there were only ten students, that, that class of twenty twenty-five, there were only ten kids that were twenty twenty-six, whatever it was. What's their class?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah, there were only ten, it went all the way up to twenty-five, so that's you broke there, um. We, we celebrated that as a building. Ten grade, again, you can see the number of students fall into those, those categories, uh, if you look at that little graph, I think the highlight that I saw there is the yellow is bad. You look at that graph, right, that's the number of students not proficient, and that continues to go down, so this last year, the twenty twenty-three, that same class. Is at twelve percent, same with kids, so that was your deck, Dan, that was kind of to your question earlier. Are we seeing growth in that regard, where the proficiency is going up or the non-proficiency is going down, and I think it is specific for that. And then a couple of other highlights you could see there for that class, uh, twenty twenty-five. And then going, going to the class of twenty twenty-four, hundred and thirty-seven students tested, last year seventeen students abandoned efficient, they grew by eight. Saw another huge growth, um, in math proficiency, this is Ben's class, last year there were twenty-three kids. They were in that category, and you can see them went all the way up to thirty-seven, which is, and that's almost, you know. Well, it's over a quarter of the class with advancement that you have next. Alright, now we can go to number three.
That's the only way. We measure academic progress.
We measure academic progress.
At the high school level, that's the only thing that we have as far as a standardized assessment. You don't have any other standardized assessment. They're all team based assessments.
I know if I still have people that take the A C Ts, we are students maybe or P S A, they'll get that data back.
We do, yeah. The number for the P S A is really low. I mean, it's maybe fifty percent. Of our kids. A C T is about seventy percent of our kids. This, this la, I haven't had, I don't have the data, I haven't seen it, but year prior, we were at twenty four point three in regards to the total composite score, I think. Want to say it was twenty four point three because that was the highest it had ever been at Seoul. I think that was last year, wasn't it? So goal three was connected to the mental wellness, mental wellness priority, mental health support. So really what we wanted to get implemented, which we had, had none of, was some tier one instruction specific to the castle standards. And so. Kevin Miller and Lucas standing agreed to do this and. Why? We thought this was a good idea. It wasn't my idea, but it was a really good one. Some in our leadership team. Every kid is going to be a part of that throughout the course of the year at some point, whether it's for nine weeks or maybe even a whole year at different times. Let's, you know, inter, inject those courses with this work. And so Kevin and, and Lucas met with Mike, they create lesson that happened once a week. The goal was to have it nine times, so they'd get nine lessons. That didn't happen every single quarter. But they shared out both feedback from kids, feedback, feedback from themselves. It started in, I would say it was kind of tough to get kids to see the, the value or the purpose in it. But over time, it definitely grew and the perception was much, much better. We looked at the DESA data too. I mean, I could share that. It wasn't connected to this. The, the number of students that were considered in the red. I mean, it was really low all year, but it went down over the course of the year too. At least we didn't use that data. We had eight kids that really received tier two interventions and this was either a small group or one-on-one. S T L support, that was with ours, with our staff, Mike or Katie. Some other just data, there was a total of six failures. When it was all said and done, we still have a couple incompletes that are going to be finished up hopefully over the summer into the, the fall. But that's, that's really good, good work. That does not include the Kirkwood grades. I just didn't pull those. So that was just the ones for our courses in-house. I, I wanted to share the conditions for learning results to me because it was a highlight, I would say. I'm going to pass around the document if I can find it, two documents and then I'll try to explain it as you go. So really what this does, the, the conditions for learning, it looks at four different, or five different domains. Built to human relationships, boundaries and expectations, emotional safety, physical safety, and then students-to-student relationships. And each students fills out this survey. It's about forty five questions. And those questions all correlate with one of those five categories. And thinking about some of the questions they ask. They're worded weird sometimes, but ultimately then it gives you this percentage of the positive. Responses to the maybe not so much. And so what I'm going to pass around and I, I just didn't print it all off in color, so I only have two copies. But one of them is going to be the student survey and so it's highlighted over the top, the student survey. And I'll pass this around after, after reading it out, but. Built to student relationships, they, they grew by six points. And they'll compare it on the side to both Grandwood, the state and to where we were at your last year. So that was a growth of states. Boundaries and expectations was a growth of seven. And again, go to comparative to those other three. Emotional safety went up. Physical safety was the only one that went down. It went down by one percentage point. And again, you can see that comparatively. And then student to students went up by four. Again, you can see that, you can pass it around. I'll just give you like a couple of examples where you think about that one was in physical safety, I think was one that we didn't. Do well on. Here's some of those questions that, 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 that they asked. And U S parents have the opportunity, if you have a kid in the district. To fill this out. I'm not going to share that data though, because we didn't have hardly any parents filled out. So it's really not a good representation of. Our, our parents. Had you the things deliberately damaged? Have you stolen something? And you've not caught someone. So those are the type of questions under the chemical safety that they. They, they've asked. And it's not, it's not specifically at school, but it doesn't say has this, has this happened at school, but have you ever done this like? And then the staff surveys, what's going to go, go around next? And again, this is all fifty. Some staff members, they filled this out, same five categories. But again, for, for us, this is tied to, you know, the emotional well-being of our staff. And so. The adult, the adult relationships grew pretty well. Boundaries, next expectations grew drastically. Emotional safety went way up. Physical safety went up and the student, their view of students-to-student relationships went up. And again, you can see this comparatively to the other three that they had. The other thing I wanted to share too was just our referral data, because that all ties into this emotional well-being of kids. We had twenty three students that were really, they had some type of a consequence. For some type of discipline, for some type of behavior issue. We had roughly a hundred and thirty, give or take from this couple. And those referrals were all attendance based. And most of it would have been true. And again, that was down by, not quite thirty percent comparatively. So ne- next steps, our, our kids were super pumped. Ben, I don't know if he's heard about it yet, so. Everyone wanted to, like his class hasn't had the same schedule since they've been in high school and really that's going to stay the same. Except for on Thursdays. So Thursdays, there's going to be a new, and it's really character strong is what it is. It's going to happen. And it's going to be between second and third block. Every student, ninth grade, through twelfth grade, will have on Thursdays a lesson that's going to be connected to. Just grow, connecting to our portrait of graduate skills. The five competencies the castle has and then it'll also tie into one of our components of I cap. And that's what I talked about a little bit earlier, however. Trying to figure out a way to best. You know, why all this? So let me seem like a, yeah, because I know S T L for some. But more than some is something they don't want to hear. They don't, they won't even give it a shot going in. And so how we roll this out is going to be important for, for you guys too, I think, as soon as, but that'll be about a twenty five or thirty minute block of time between second and third block. On Thursdays. And then I think another great next step specific to this building priority goal is the ten place on site. Throughout the course of the week. So, yeah, any other questions or anything else specific to the, the indicators or those goals?
Encouraged to see that the S T L lesson isn't going to be the last thing of a Thursday day.
Yeah, alright.
Pretty believe early for various different activities.
Yeah, many of them in Kirkwood is gonna, they'll be able to be there too. Way that we'll build it in the time. But that really hasn't been communicated to anybody other than our teachers.
And anybody who listens to it on the internet when it's posted tomorrow.
No, well, Smith at the same time, it actually reduces, it reduces the block time by about, I think it was like eight minutes per block then. Yeah. So for you as a senior, you'll have a senior sponsor. Yeah. So you want to the teachers that don't have a seminar. So like this year, I have fourteen seniors on my roster. We didn't do that, obviously, but this will get part of that, so.
Though in high school, the primary goal is to graduate. And to do that, you have to passion, require graduation. Sports days. So we're, I'm curious if there's anything we can do to start tracking those students that. Have to be pretty recovering or have to do something comparative to be taking a course. In terms of how, how effective of, of our teaching or when you're doing it the first time you structure. That we can measure that a little bit, you know, to be beyond just, because everybody hates the S A S course.
Yeah, we now, um, it's, again, it's. So minimal, it's, it's hard to see if it would require some type of comprehensive or, you know, content specific change. Like this year, I think we had two kids. It was, they were poor classes, poor a lot of all, or not, or many that didn't pass the class. One of them's going to take it over again, the same. The other one's going to do it in a different comment. It's going to be a different muscle. The other thing that we'll do is an intervention table. So let's say we have six kids that were now through one, we're already four weeks in. This is, what we're doing isn't working. Interactions aren't working. So we're going to take them out of that. We're going to put them into a different. Class for the rest of the quarter and then they're going to start nuclear algebra. The next quarter. So then that's kind of a. You know, in the moment transition, so it doesn't get to the end of the family. So they withdraw from that course. About any interruptions. So it's, it's four weeks for the markers. And well, the marker is three days, but every, every year we'll have a student or two that falls, you know, every quarter that is an exception. That's where we, we make that decision, you know, at the intervention.
Random question that. Just the Iowa core. Mash the A C T. Cause I know, I'll just speak from experience, two years ago, my dad wanted to get help on some. A C Ts, math style, and the math teachers were like, ooh, we're out of teaching this. You know what I mean? So I just wanted to make sure that seventy percent of our kids are going to take that test. That we are preparing it like that. So I remember even two years ago, that things definitely changed. But I just wanted to make sure that's what they're going to be assessed on. That those are topics that are covered, you know, so then that's their.
Well, there's everything that Iowa Core has is on A C T, but there's also more. So we're not teaching to the A C T.
Right, for sure.
Teaching the core. There's a disconnect there. Yes, everything in the core is on, but there's more on the A C T. I think it's one of those like three counts too. There's. You, you get, you get just about, it's like, like one, maybe one thing might have missed, but that's, that's about it. So it's, it's pretty good. But that's, but that's taking through the gap too, but not if it does that. Yes, algebra two. Yeah, so.
So that may have changed in the last two years.
We've been on the development side of the A C T. I can tell you that there is a national standard that goes through determination from seeds. What does a lovely grade curriculum look like? And so it is, it is assessing from what is the interpretation of the typical high school. Progression. By the time you get to the spring. For the eleventh grade year, how much knowledge, how much learning has occurred in which particular skills? And it's all probably what goes, which is what Iowa Core is. Which could be.
Right, for sure.
Other.
I'm going back a long time, but I know what I struggle with. I was advanced in math, they also. But then we hit the E C T, some of that was like basic geometry stuff that you hadn't seen in a long time and you're like, you're going back. It could have been a few, three years before you. I just want to make sure it's prepared, right? And I guess that's the test that makes anything, that's what the country says you. That in the S A T. We wanted to, they're, now all of us getting rid of those.
So what does that look like? How's, how many are? As far as students go, the ones, the ones that are, I would say really driven either to get into a certain school. Or to get a lot of money. I mean, that's, that's the biggest benefit of scoring well on that. But as far as entrance goes, you know, it's going to continue, I think, to shift the, the second, post-secondary level.
It's, it's a hard, yeah. It, it's not required anymore for that evolution assessments. Many other colleges don't require anymore, but it's the only way we're going to get.
Right now, I, I'm, I'm guessing over the next five years, they're going to continue to find ways to. Well, to create opportunities for kids to showcase their skill set in another way. To get some of those funds, but maybe not. We'll see.
It's always hard to tell. I know that Iowa, the G R E was moved to not required. During the pandemic and now it's coming back next year for a lot of graduate colleges. So it's, the, the pendulum swung one way and it's like, well, eh, that wasn't as accessible. We really need to know. These students, so.
Yeah, and I think when we think about those assessments, there's still something to be said. People that score well on them. It's because they're really gifted, like they're smart. That's why, right? It doesn't mean that other kids that don't score well on that, they're not gifted in other areas.
Good luck. We'll be thinking about it.
I'm happy to geek out on you.
Well, just in general for you guys, thank you. I mean, I think from my perspective from the board. This is always hard and some of those numbers aren't what you want them to be, you know what I mean? And, and that's okay. For me, at least, you know. We're not always where we want to be, but it's that we're trying to, one, identify why aren't we where we want to be? And two, how do we get to where we want to be? You know what I mean? And I think it's important. That's the most important thing to us. You know, first of all, identification. And if we're not assessing something we can identify, then we have to change that aspect to we can get down to the point of it. Once we find out with that, it's one of the best ways to help these kids be successful. And so I see that poured through all of you. You know, I mean, I, I know sometimes your dad comes out and you're like, we don't know why this is, we live in this and we're not too happy with it. And we also have celebrations. And so that's normal, right? I love every grade here to be ninety five percent, but that's probably not realistic. But it's not a bad goal to have, right? And so I do appreciate the work that continues to happen. K through twelve, I'm trying to get and move all these kids. From, I'm fortunate in my house to have I D Ps to gifted kids and everywhere in between them. So. Okay, well, what's this plan? I'm just as motivated for the high achieving kids to move because where they come from places. Right? They don't, they don't, you know, everything's easy. It's my last year. I'm going to do pottery and I'm going to.
Have you been looking at his schedule?
But, you know, just that we, we continue to value, you know, continue to do that stuff. So thank you very much for doing that and working all together.
Yeah, one point, I'd like to see Mel's number on the, on the connections, because we talked about this a number of years ago. We, one of the sessions that I S P talked about, you know, success and, and, and reaching graduation. It was really about that connection. And they gave out numbers about, you know, students who have, you know. Dan, Dan, you were there in that session. It was like one, if you got one connection, you know. Eighty percent chance you were going to graduate. Zero connections. It was like thirty percent chance. And then if you got to that second connection, it went up to ninety in that third connection. So. It'd be interesting to see as we collect that data at the SIS level. How does that track moving along? Do we, do they maintain those as they move from grade to grade, from building to building? Because I think that's always the struggle is, you know. New people, because the more transitions you have, you know. The more opportunities there are for you to kind of fall off. You know, the good news is we got a single track, so you're kind of with your cohort. You don't have to worry about melding with a bunch of other. Classmates that were in different buildings, but it is a. There's something you see, actually, we might, I wonder if in your high school questions, I know that, if there's something there that talks about those connections. I think you touched on the same sort of thing, but it's a different raising, so.
It does, the conditions for learning.
So. It's good to have that data. I, I appreciate you guys are following up on it. It is that, it's great to have the data. It's more important to follow up and make sure that the kids are, are having those connections, so. Other questions? Ben, this is your opportunity to ask the high school principal questions on the data and, you know, he has to answer. This is Hillary's favorite part, you know. Thank you, Ben. If no other questions on this area, we will move to board committee updates. Is there anybody that feels the need to report? I didn't have anybody on my list that needed to report. Sorry, I had, we have a schedule and there's nobody that was listed specifically for this month. None of the committees had to report out. So I was asking whether or not, hey, the board committees wanted to report anything. Yep, yeah. It's basically your committee meeting summary, so. Consent agenda. Anything need to get pulled?
Motion to approve the consent. Agenda.
What's my role calls? Second by Coons, all of their signatures by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously, action items. Chris in her. Ever efficiency has determined that the election in November is too late in the month for us to actually have. The swearing in of people in November and still pay our bills. So we are going to be one of those boards that is going to reorganize in December. However, we did not set a December board meeting, so therefore we must publicly set a board meeting for December so that we can swear in new members. And re-elected members and reorganize the board. So that'll be in December. So this is a time when we all pull out our calendars. And.
And you're suggest, I know what I'm doing is.
December twenty first.
So yeah, December twenty first, December twenty first would be the third Thursday, which would be.
Yeah.
So, yeah, December twenty-first, December twenty-first would be the third Thursday, which would be, which would be our typical meeting. I think the question was whether or not that is too close to the holidays, and it would be the last school day before the holidays. And so the question, I think, really came down to. Do you move it up to the, there's a twenty-first work for us, do we wanna move a week forward to the fourteenth, do we wanna move it to the Tuesday, the nineteenth? I probably do, is, I probably do, is. When is the Iowa Iowa State game? That'll be the question. I don't think there's dates out for the calendar yet, so I think we're out of luck. I don't care, I'm not going to Ames. I don't go to Ames, ever. Well, not true. I try not to go to Ames, ever. I try not to go to Iowa City either, except for basketball and football games, but that's a different story. Um.
I would prefer the fourteenth over the twenty-first. Twenty-first seems a little close to the holiday.
So that, that was Chris's concern, so the question was Thursday or Tuesday. So if we want a Thursday, the fourteenth, that works for me. Does it work for everybody?
Yeah.
Someone needs to set up.
So December fourteenth.
I need a motion.
Motion, like a motion to set the board meeting for December twenty-twenty-three. Reboot the national meeting for December fourteenth and twenty-fourth.
Five thirty P M?
Five thirty P M.
Motion by Rocco's.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
By James. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, since we're meeting site mode, uh, it's the end of the year, uh, and. June twenty-ninth is at five, at seven fifteen A M is the proposed time for our payoff, all the things that we can before the year ends.
And then we were in meetings, ready to put your flight home.
Would you call in?
Potentially.
If we don't have enough.
Yeah.
Probably in California. Well, maybe perhaps. That's five thirty.
Works for me, so it looks, I think we've got at least, Dan will be in his car, right? Yeah, so we, we should be okay, cause Dan will be in his car, Adam and I can be here.
Perfect.
You can be at the airport, you can be sleeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's real, I think, the plan is to not have anything on the agenda other than paying bills. We may have contracts if you, if you got a position, we might, we might have a couple of positions to fill, but it's really just a consent agenda. It's, this is the, this is the meeting where we're here and gone, and it takes longer for Chris to call the role than it does for us to have the meeting, so.
I'll send you around, you know, I guess.
Ben, it's a great meeting for you to be, you'll be up early that morning, uh, and have time to, you know.
Motion, motion is such a special, uh, year end, uh, board meeting for June twenty-nine, uh, seven fifteen, uh, A M.
Motion by Alaska.
Second.
Second by Coons, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Adam has the language for.
So, oh my goodness. Yep. First one we're up is the resolution appointing paying agent, bond register and transfer agent, proving the paying agent. Bond register and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the same.
Yep.
This is fun and exciting stuff, Ben. We're basically spending money, or this, in this case, we're collecting money to spend money. This is the three million dollars we bonded out, uh, so we can do the initial project, so.
So the highlights, the language.
Yes.
All right, I'll make motion, uh, resolution appointing U N B Bank. And a period of Western Moine Iowa Paying Agent Bond Register and Transfer Agent, approving the Paying Agent Bond Register. And Transfer Agent Agreement and Authorizing the Execution of the Same.
Motion by Alaska, second by Wolf. Any, any discussion before we? This has all been thoroughly reviewed by the lawyers, so. Roll call?
Wolf, yes.
Rockholtz.
Yes. Toons.
Yeah.
Alaska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. How often you get authorized three million dollars?
Next one will be, uh, motion of approval of form of tax exemption certificate.
Motion by Halaska.
Second.
Second by Rocco's. Another roll call?
Wolf, yes, Rockholtz.
Yes.
Toons.
Yeah.
Alaska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
All right, next one, motion of proof, of approval of continuing disclosure certificate.
Motion by Alaska, second by Rocco's. Roll call?
Wolf, yes, Rockholtz.
Yes.
Toons.
Yeah.
Alaska.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, next up.
All right, uh, resolution of ending the resolution of authorizing the issuance of general obligation school bond series twenty-twenty-three. Of the summer community school district, state of Iowa, in the amount of three million, four hundred and seventy thousand. And loving attacks for the payment thereof adopted equal twenty, twenty-three.
Motion by Alaska, second by Coons.
Wolf, yes, Rockholtz.
Yes.
Toons.
Yes.
Alaska.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes. That was the exact amount that we're borrowing, in case you wanted to know, um. And that will get us through the first set of projects until we borrow another ten million next April. Um, next up on the agenda. Is the second reading of board policy four six point three. Davis, you wanna go over that? This is the one we skipped last month because.
This one has to do with notification when teachers want, are taking graduate level courses. And they wanna move over salary lanes, it's, it's the timing of notification to central office. So that, um, we can account for it and plan, uh, in the budget and everything for, for contracts and things like that, so. And we, we, we had policy set, uh, ISB had some sample policy that we, we looked at. There were some differing language in there, so we pulled it. Um, Pat deals with, uh, we have teachers submit those lane course requests to her. So that she can log it and calculate, you know, uh, expenses for the following year. So, um, we had told the union when we, uh, pulled things out of the master contract. That we won't just unilaterally change the language in the handbook without sitting down with them, so pass that down with Carrie. They together worked out language that board policy will fit now. The teacher handbook policy, it aligns, it matches now. And so. That's what we're putting before you in the second reading, the, the revised language that. Um, we looked at the staff handbook and basically line board policy to match staff handbook, so we really aren't changing any language in the handbook.
But this is the exact language.
Yes. Yes, uh, well, if you read it, it, and, and it basically. Um, refers to the handbook to where if we would change it, we decide to change a date. We don't have to change board policy, cause it says refer to the staff handbook for the date or whatever, so. We are.
Which was what they said we were gonna do. Um, you know what I mean? And so we did our due diligence and we had the attitude, change something. ISB, but we did so bring teacher union, so kudos to the administration for that, just from the enthusiasm. And, uh, bringing the new win and that's what I thought. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the second reading by Coon, second by Alaska. Any discussion?
Can you just, not necessarily this document, can you just break it down with this case about superintendent has to be structured to approve credit?
Yes, so, so for licensure, you can just, you can just take credit. It doesn't have to be graduate level credit. Now, if you go and take gradual level credit. Um. We spend about under, we, we average about sixty to eighty thousand dollars every year. With lane changes. So we'll settle the contract, let's say we settle a contract for three and a half percent, it costs the districts three hundred thousand dollars. We'll spend an additional sixty-eight, sixty to eighty thousand dollars above that to accommodate all the lane changes. So with that, it, we wanna value what they take. And so anytime they're, they're taking a graduate level course within a master's program. It's approved. There's been a couple of times where they've submitted or they've requested to take a course from the University of Idaho State on. Blah, 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 it's like, eh, that has nothing to do with our priorities, our strategic plan, it has really, we don't see any benefit. No. You won't get, we're, we're saying, no, you can take that, but it won't count towards moving you over lane on our salary schedule. They can take the course if they wanna submit it to the BOE for licensure renewal or something like that, but we won't acknowledge that. Or we want the courses that they're taking to actually impact kids in a way that aligns to what we're doing. So, that's just, I think we've had since. In the last five years, I think is the Idaho courses, we basically said to staff, no, those aren't gonna work. And, and the, and this policy helps, cause we tell teachers, ask first, you know, submit the course first. Then, then if it's approved, take it, but don't take it and then try to submit it. And, and this policy clearly lines it. We do have, we do have Carrie on board, the unions on board, I mean, they, they understand it. And it's clearly written out, they communicate it to their staff too. We communicated every year to new staff. And again, to staff, make sure you put in your request. Before you actually take the course, cause we don't want you wasting your money just in case, yeah.
It's gonna go to Dan's point about pottery, you know, in our teacher, we might have put an advanced pottery class, but not the.
We would have.
The calculus teacher.
Right, not for the calculus teacher, yeah.
We haven't voted on this yet. Uh, any other discussion? All is in favor of the second reading, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up is first reading of board policy two ten point nine. Um, you may or may not realize that our board policy, we actually have a agenda we're supposed to follow. And we sometimes tweak it and it becomes a temporary tweak, which is fine, but then over time, things like talking points, other things become permanent additions. And they should get updated in the board, uh, policy, so that, cause otherwise, we're supposed to start with the template and it. And add on a month by month, but. This updates the, the backend of it, so starting three through the end is just an update of what we currently do. Uh, we did, uh, Cassid, and you wanna talk about all the, one of the things that we talked about, Daniel may remember this many, many moons ago. We talked about, should we have the pledge of allegiance, uh, at the board meetings, because a lot of boards do. And for whatever reason, we talked about it and we didn't add it. And so, I, part of that was because we were always bouncing around and there wasn't always in the libraries a flag. And so it just became a, don't deal with it, um, but, uh, we talked with Cassie, she asked why we don't. And I said, well, we don't because we just haven't, and, uh, it wasn't a good excuse. And, uh, we ask our students to do the pledge of allegiance at the start of every, or during every school day. Uh, so we're proposing to, uh, add it into the board meetings, uh, only probably ten years after Dan and I were in a meeting where we talked about adding it. We might be slow getting there, Ben, but we eventually get there.
Yeah, whenever they brush it off, I would send it to them.
I just happen to be a little bit for certain reasons, so.
Well, it's good.
Yeah, that came up, and I think it was really just a logistic about, you know, the question came up, do we really want, you know, do we wanna make sure there's, cause there weren't flags in the libraries, do we want, you know. Ma- making sure that the flag got there for every meeting, cause we were bouncing around between buildings, it's like. And they were setting up, and we were paying custodial staff to set it up, it's like, you know, do they have to, where, you know.
That's why.
Yeah, that's why it slapped off, and it's just like, but then when we settled it on always meet at the same location, it didn't, it didn't, uh. Come back out, so, cause nobody asked, so. Um, this is just the first reading, while the chance to update it again next month, um.
On this motion to approve the, uh, first reading of board policy two ten point nine.
Motion by Alaska.
I would like to second.
Second by Rocco's. Uh, any discussion? Thanks for bringing it back up to our attention, cause it caused me to actually look at it and realize that we had not updated this policy in a bit. And so the actual meeting agenda was out of order, so it's good.
And I listened to a lot of other board meetings for my job and I.
Yep.
Several boards outside of Iowa.
Yeah.
Our, our kids in schools do a good job with the pledge. In fact, when we were touring Congress, uh, Representative Miller Meeks. Around, we happened to be in the high school midday, and that's when the high school does it, because that's when they've got the most students.
Yeah.
And it was a good touch. Those kids in the cafeteria immediately.
Yeah.
Just stopped talking, faced the flag and, and, you know, she got to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that?
No, we did not. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Sorry, I, I moved on already to the next agenda item.
Information.
Uh, information items.
Those are the handbooks, and, and each principal, they, their handbook is on, uh. Uh, attached and then a separate page if, for any changes. Uh, there, there weren't, I mean, I know, uh.
Didn't change anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Couple that, and they were minor, I, I think, uh, Mills, uh, Lakeview and S I S are removing hats.
Would, uh, we approve that in the next meeting?
We do not, we do not approve.
They're just information.
Because the handbooks are administrative implementation of board policy. This is our opportunity to look at them and raise any questions or concerns that we have. If we have significant concerns, we go to Davis and then they could come back up.
K five.
This is the student.
Handbooks.
Yeah.
Student handbook.
Any updated changes we need to make around social media apps or. Network usage.
Yeah, they, uh, like you, there's one, watch social news.
Lakeview and the intermediate did a good job of just kind of meshing some things, so there's more consistency between the buildings. Of course, you know, you're older than fourth and fifth, so there are a few more privileges that you get at S I S.
Well, I said, my son just got out of there and he had every day, so.
Yeah, well, maybe it was your kid.
No, no changes in the high school handbook.
Correct, yeah.
Well, Ben, this would have been where we asked for your input on the high school handbook, but. What was that?
I don't think.
Are your fellow students resting appropriately for school? If you have questions, comments or concerns, please reach out to Davis and he will.
I'll inquire and get him, yeah.
And we really, from a timeline standpoint, really, so, I think the goal is to have them all locked down, until we've got any concerns, we really wanna do it by the, wow. Maybe before beef days. Benefit, if there's things that are wrong in there that you think should be fixed, that's, this is your opportunity to, to talk to the superintendent, saying, you know, I think that, uh, you need to. And, and I'm serious, you're right, cause you, you have a different perspective on it. And I know last year we had some changes and so Hillary provided some guidance on those, and what the impact is, but. This year, there's no high school changes, but if you look through it. You know, are there things that, is there something in there that doesn't make sense that should get fixed? You know, like, it says this, but we, you know, it doesn't, you know, we don't enforce it or. You know, this is a, you know, this is a problem and, and we should think about how it's addressed, uh, it's, it's your opportunity, this is one of your opportunities to directly impact, uh. You know, maybe everyone has to wear a ball cap on every second Thursday of the month, uh, chosen by, uh, by Cassie. Okay. Josh.
Or Davis?
Yeah, I think it's, I'll let Josh walk you through, but as, as I, uh, we think we. I don't know if we've said this or not, but this is about a two-year process that's involved, um. It really, it, it was driven but from portrait of graduate and the whole identifying the skills. And then, um, it just kind of drove to kind of a, a clear, more focused strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the work that we've done over the last couple of years really started with some of the. Conversation around proficiency-based, evidence-based learning, uh, where grading really fits down the list. Um, they really, I mean, that's where it really kind of stemmed from. Um, they really, I mean, that's where it really kind of stemmed from was discussion around standard-based grading. Where are we? And now. What does this look like? Well, in, in all that work that we did upfront and kind of discovery. Um, you know, it's not just about grading, it's about all the things that lead up to that piece and beyond. And one of the big components was really defining, you know, what does success for students really look like? And so that's where, uh, on the second page of the draft here is the graduate skills at the bottom. But then also really thinking about what are truly our beliefs. And we, you know, and when we look at some of the. Historical documents, we have, we have beliefs, we have, um, some thought, and we have some things around that. Um, and then that also led to, okay, well, what about our mission and vision statement? And really having a deeper conversation around. Our, is our mission, are our mission and vision statement really truly student-centered? Is over the course of several, um, presentations, I think we've heard a lot of different ideas around student-centered learning. And so as we've really dug into that. Starting a couple of years ago, I'd actually say a little bit beyond that. But then really starting to build some momentum going into this year, when we met with, uh, Dr. Stillwell at Drake last summer as an administrative team. And really started to think, what do we mean by student-centered? Well, what does that mean to have a student-centered mission statement, our mission statement? How do we? How do we go about really articulating what it is that we're about and, and what we want for our students? And you, when we looked at, you know, our, our historical mission and vision. They, they met our needs at that time, but as we continue to grow and as we continue to develop where we, where we wanna go, where, where we wanna head. We really want to try and simplify our, our statements and to really get at, um. What it is that we're about, um, and, and how we go about doing that. So when you look at, at the draft here, really trying to simplify this. And, um, when we look at the top there, kind of our, our, our mission. Um, statement there, engage every student in opportunities to learn, lead, and grow. And I know last board meeting, you just, I mean, talk, you've heard about this and talked about this a little bit. And then the other statement, vision statement, there's every student graduates prepared for success. And not just post-secondary success, because post-secondary really, um.
Well, we don't, we defined it, yeah. We defined it as, uh. Post-secondary is enrollment, employment, or enlistment.
Right. But I think when you looked at post-secondary, it was a lot of people went to college, right? Or you, you gotta go to college. Well, you know, you don't have to go to college. You can enroll, enlist, or be employed. So.
So we dropped post-secondary, because it, it was just, we had to explain it too often. Yeah.
So, you know, and, and then really trying to again narrow the focus around. Our pillars, our, our main areas that we're really trying to focus on, which I think you can see from the present, the, the data presentation as well as. Thinking ahead into next steps for next year, but we have academic goals, we have wellness goals, we have those future readiness goals. Um, and really trying to make this graphic connect, because they've all connected. They're not separate siloed, um, pillars. They all have an impact on one another.
Well, what we're working on too is the, the district's strategic playing goals are broader. And then each building will narrow that down. And so you saw, you know, for instance, Mike at the middle school. His goal one, you know, efficiency in reading, writing, math, and science. Some of the things that he's doing, but he's also using MAP, he's using ISAS, he's using, you know, middle, uh, elementary's using benchmark assessment. FAST, you know, various, various measures to get at that.
I noticed that the middle school, at least in the handout, didn't have anything to do with wellness.
And when you, yeah, um, with their planning page, it did have a wellness goal, an SMBH goal. And I think a school culture goal. When we talked with Mike, um, last week, uh, interlocking on his.
And I asked him to leave a few, because like his school culture goal was really more, uh, staff-related. Equipping them and, and a lot of culture work with staff as far as prep, preparing them. For when we move this, uh, behavior intervention up from K five. So it's like. You know, if it's staff data, we don't need to really see that. Let's just look at student data tonight at the board meeting.
Yeah.
For.
Wellness.
No. Well, we would, I mean, we'd have Dessa and all that stuff.
Yeah.
We'd have data.
And, and I think for the middle school, like the high school, we're trying to. At the secondary level, trying to get focused on what is, what we really wanna tackle. They start with more of a staff or a culture. But one of their wellness goals for this past year, that's engage role, was to create an SMBH treatment. To really study and get the current reality of what's happening in the building and then establishing goals. And, and really, when we look at this wellness goal over the course of this last year. A lot of, a lot of us just been working and planning and getting professional development lined up as well as engaging professional development. Or to get ready for, I mean, next year, it's gonna be a heavy rush, there's gonna be a lot of stuff. And when you look at the plans on a page four, each building this next year, their wellness piece is pretty similar all the way across. I mean. They couldn't be more aligned with the district and with each other. So, um, because of the character strong tier one, uh, curriculum that we're gonna be using. K twelve, PK twelves, uh, which is a huge step in the, in the right direction for us as well as. K five then with behavior and interventionists. And then I think this is gonna be. Um, a, a really good thing again is the school-based therapist in each of the buildings. Um, so, and, and then, yeah, there's just a lot, a lot, a lot of work that's gonna go on with that. And then future readiness, you know, we're looking at. High school has really led the way in terms of career and active planning. Middle school, we're gonna start to move down into middle school, but each, but both Lakeview and. SIS are having, starting to have more conversations around career, uh, or this future readiness piece. Through the portion of graduate skills, so we, what we've identified about the district. And what does that look like in becoming, and a lot of them become later.
Middle schools had a little bit of that, right? I mean, it's already.
They have, like, yeah. Yeah, and so they're gonna, the goal is to expand zillow down to middle school, always sixth grade. And then start to incorporate a career and active inclining theme or incorporating those pieces. I think split them, um, specifically at eighth grade level. I think that's where Zach mentioned having some kids from eighth grade. Being a part of their time captain. Just to make that connection across middle school and this here. So those are some big pieces. And then we really, you know, we. This is the beliefs piece and the portrait of graduate skills was a bulk of the work. Over the last two and two and a half years, we, uh, specifically around, well, actually. Both, um, I think all PK twelve teachers. A year and a half ago, had an opportunity to provide input, um, study and. And provide information, their ideas around what do we think our beliefs are, what do we truly believe about kids and learning and. And growth as well as the skills. Um, Zach really did a great job of incorporating student feedback in high school. I think almost. I think almost a hundred percent of students at the high school provided feedback around skills under self and others. And then it was quite the process that we started to whittle down. And, and this is where we also included staff. To help kind of identify and whittle down what are, what can we truly believe students mean? To be successful when they, in school, but also beyond school, um, that we can start to really dig into. Um, I know at the high school level and at the middle school level, um. Really starting to take a look at how do we incorporate these skills into our daily lessons. And, and prioritizing these in a way where it's not just, hey, today we're gonna talk about goal setting. And that's not the point. It's how do we provide opportunities for kids to learn about goal setting and practice goal setting? In certain courses or, or subject areas. Um, so when we look at, when we really look at the beliefs, um, learning is a process. Wellness is essential. All students can learn at high levels and then collaboration is a foundational piece. Um, to, to our work. Um, it's been interesting, we, uh, at the end of this, um. At the end of this year, we had a, a standard-based grading oversight committee to kind of talk about planning for next year. And learning is a process, I believe, that t- team members on that team. Refer back to that. If learning is a process, then what should grading really look like? If we really truly believe that. Um, so it's, it's been, it's been refreshing to hear and the connections staff are starting to make. Um, not everyone yet, but we're building some momentum. And then looking at the portrait of a graduate skills, goal setter, balanced, under self, students themselves becoming goal setters. Understanding what a balanced life looks like for them. Um, being, being a critical thinker, problem solver, and how to persevere through those challenges. And then others, just, and others is that, that interpersonal re- interaction with one another. Again, just. Collaborator, being compassionate towards one another. Um, how do you, how do you communicate? How do you become a communicator, a, a benefactor communicator? And then how are you self-aware of social situations? If you're putting yourself in those situations. So those are, those are the big rocks of this, um, strategic plan that we put together. We try to keep it simple. But it's still complex at the same time in regards to all, to all the work that's leading into this. And to help align everything that we're doing across the district. So when we, when we talked about balance, like, let me take Ben for an example. You're, and you're involved with several sports. Your hygiene, you're involved, uh, in other things probably outside of school, your friends. Um, balanced in terms of, when you think about balance in relation to wellness. If I'm a balanced individual, I can, I can prioritize my life. And, and not, and not to, and not put myself in a position where I'm overwhelmed. Um, which then impacts your, your wellness, your, your wellbeing, physically, mentally. Um, but how do we help kids understand what balance really means in that regard?
Ben, what do you think about these? What do you think about these skills? Do you believe that there are senior next year? That if you could check all these boxes under the skill for success, that you feel like you would be ready for your transition?
Yeah.
To whatever comes next?
Yeah, I think they're, uh. I think they're, they're taught decently. Um, they're obviously good. There, there's some, uh, good skills that are put out there, but I think they, they teach a thing on.
There one that stands out who more than the other?
Hmm, as in like, what's gonna help most, like, for.
Focus your energy on improving one of these skills. Uh, which one do you think you would? You would think would help you?
Liberation.
I think one there that I liked, perseverance, right? Like, that's a big one. And it kind of stands out to me, especially with these kids and having kids. When we come through tough times or having that balanced lifestyle, how do you do that stuff? How do you prioritize or? You know, I think that's where some of that stuff. Helping prepare them for the next ones to come.
Keep pushing forward when it gets hard.
Yeah, I think it's important to provide opportunities for kids to persevere. So that, um.
In order, it's right.
A lot of the secondary. But as you grow, you realize that, you know, some of your easiest years are. That young, you don't really know what's coming, you know, having a life with family and kids and, you know, cancer and. All these things that are gonna pitch you as an adult. And, and sometimes I think you've made the error. As people on the self as a parent, is trying to take those opportunities for my kids to persevere and try to take the pain out of it. Because you don't want to be hurt because you're a parent, but, uh. But that perseverance is, is the important part of it. And so supporting them through it, not taking an invasion of them. And I think that's gonna be an important piece to this, you know, I mean, it would be, uh, you know, it's, uh. It's fun to approach, you know, guys, if you see how you progress, you hear some, see them back there, there's like, they're really, you know, just flash.
Well, and I think the. Biggest point, uh, you know, I, I wanna make too is. In the conversation we've had, it's never been about test scores.
Right.
It's never been about grades other than maybe, uh. Separate conversation. It's all about seeing, getting our kids just. Be, you know, be humans, right? Good humans, leaving and, and being prepared to, whatever it is they wanna do. You know, we spent a lot of time at the beginning of the meeting, talking about achievement and data and assessment. But none of that means anything if the kids don't have these skills.
Pacing all together, right? All the data and everything else. I think we're in a unique situation. We've got a growing community. It's different than when you first arrived, there were I arrived. Him, same thing, um, but to make sure we're still, it's individualized, right? Learning. And making sure we capture each kid, right? Whether they're high achieving, they're struggling, um, it's good to see that we're diving in. You gotta continue to do so. And again, I think, kind of looking at this, um, it's just not all, but we gotta look at the student. I, I, I think it's good work. I know a lot's been going into this and. I was kind of a part of that when we first started doing that years ago, and it's, it's crazy to see where it's evolved, but I think it's going down the right path for sure.
This Troy's Fisher. From, yeah, SAI.
Yeah. So. And, and the intent was good, right? Even with the secondary, and we were trying to track and trace where it was going. And, but, yeah, I mean, I think the.
Yeah.
Things have changed even in the eight years I've been on the board, so it's good to see.
Hey, yeah, one of those challenges with the vision and admission is, are they, are they easy to understand for, for individuals and. As I butchered the mission statement tonight, it, it does not flow off the, our current one does not flow off the tongue, um, so.
Um. Well, this is easy to kind of run this, right? It's three pillars, they all, but again, I, I think I agree with you.
I think, you know, a cou- just a couple of thoughts that I just. As, as we're going through, I guess the, the one thing, uh, we talked about the, on the skills for success, I think the, you know. It related back to stuff with Mel earlier, that the connection piece really is, is, is something I think is important. Uh, it's, it's something that's being called out. Uh, in a lot of research right now that, you know, particularly our young folks are, are missing those connections. Um, you know, there was a piece of research out that just talked about, that they track. Was it eighth graders and twelfth graders back through the seventies and the number of times that they have, you know, they get together with their friends. In person and it's gone, it's, it's gone down from an average of once a day to now twice a week, uh. From the seventies to the, to, to the current time period for, um, for high school seniors. And so. Those personal connections are more for mental. Who, who do you rely on, right? You know, who's that person you reach out to when, when, when things, when things are very tough? If you don't have somebody to. To rely on, perseverance is a lot harder when you're persevering and, you know, you don't have that. Buddy or that teammate or that classmate that's going through the same thing you're going through, right? Uh, yeah. I mean, I got my PhD because there was a group of people who were all going through the same thing. We persevered together. It was a lot harder if you weren't getting somebody to talk to about that. Um, and the other question, you know, going back to the mission, um. And just trying to think how this, it's, you mentioned achievement, right? And, and it's not about test scores. But my mind is like, you know, engage each every student, you know, opportunities to learn, lead, grow, and achieve, and is, is, is achieved. Where does that get in there? Because we want, we want our students. To achieve, whether that's academically, uh, athletically, or, 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 or just in life. You know, the, the end goal is to achieve, you know, or is the, or is the person from, uh. ISB meeting said, you know, I just really want my kid not to live, be living in my, in my basement when they turn twenty-five, you know? Where's that level of achievement that, uh, allows them to become?
Well, that's where I think those, the learn, lead, grow is pretty powerful.
Yeah.
Because if I'm, if I'm learning, I'm achieving. If I'm, if I have the opportunity to lead, I'm, I'm achieving. And if I'm growing academically, personally, professionally. Those three words I could put are pretty powerful. Those three words are quick for, really powerful.
So it's the mission statement. Engage every student with opportunities to come in and grow, that's it.
Yep.
View actively every student will graduate prepared for success.
That's the vision.
You still have that's, you have that's kind of your achievement. Piece in it. Without the, the visions, well, the visions future state, right? That's always the struggle, right? Which is, this is something in the future, I just, it just.
And this is where Cass, like Cassie brought up, you know, what we, what do we mean by success?
Yeah.
Well, success can mean a lot of things.
Yeah.
And. And I think in our conversation, really trying to tease out, you know, where. That was always in the details, so when you look at every student graduates prepared, prepared for success. All that ends up in those, those building plan on a page, those, the building strategic plans. The data that we're looking at, um. The success criteria, all those pieces, that's what we're trying to figure out, okay? Are we being as successful as possible? Are we being su- successful in school? But then. Going back to it, not just about achievement, it's both, it's academic achievement and. It's these important skills.
If I break down success. Wrestle the thing that were. Burning my brain in terms of how to be better than success goes down to these values or these beliefs that we hold here. And that goes down to the what. In order to achieve to Tim's question is. We need to identify and provide the opportunity, which I take in from the call of future readiness, is every student. Hundred percent of them has had the opportunity to increase in goal setting. Have a wealth balance, you can just take office. Every one of them has had the opportunity, we identified where they're at and had that opportunity to. They grow and learn in each one of these skills, by the time that they graduate. We have done everything in our human, you know, possible nature to prepare them. In these areas that we believe would be most acceptable.
And then if, if. Get this solidified and nailed down and truly believe in what we're saying here, then. And that's really gonna help continue to guide what happens in the classroom, what happens for professional development, what happens with the resource that we're using. What happens with the pedagogy, what happens in all those pieces, this should guide every single thing that we do.
So if we feel that we have a lot of kids that are coming back and giving us feedback that says. They haven't really been very prepared to persevere. For future readiness, then we need to go back and see what programs have we put in place.
Well, that's, that's, that's the devil details, this is the hardest part for me. Right? Perseverance and learn, learning as a process, right? So this process is going over here, right? And it's hard, maybe, I'm just in the process, I suppose there are going up. This is the test day.
Yep.
You've got to get here and persevere through this test. Bashing those in my brains really. Because part of what motivated us was there was deadlines, there were timelines, and there were things. That, that we had to check to go through, we marched through our academic career because the steps were set up for us, not saying that's right. But there's this now. Process of like figuring it out and, you know, I would lie to you if I said, I feel a hundred percent. Confident that this process is going to achieve. At the level that it has achieved before, when they hope us fear, and I'm not saying that's right, but I'm just saying. You knew there was, you knew there were teeth.
What I reflect back on is the start of my teaching career or anybody's career. And you reflect on where you are now, I always, I always use that, you know, it's pretty sure, if I knew that. And that's where I go back to, that's the learning is a process, it's not just about a test.
For sure.
I might take a test, okay, what did I learn from that? What I should have studied. That's part of the learning process.
And that's the problem, it stands for screen. Right? Because there's no motivation to really study art the first time, because you know you got a second chance. Right? You know the game. I got, I'm late night, I couldn't persevere and study for a couple hours, but hey, I can take it over, right? We can't take it over in surgery, can't take it over in, in a project, you can't. Right, exactly, and so I just want them to be prepared for those things, and I think we're moving towards that, but I mean. I know where, I know where we're trying to get and I, I totally appreciate it, it's just how, how we go through this process to get. Those type of people, I, I'll just tell both my kids, uh, both Kate and AJ said not to take out voices this year. They, I don't know, whatever reasons, cause we too hard, new teacher, blah, blah, blah. They both regret it, and I told them, it's the dumbest decision you're taking right now, stupid. It's way easier to take it, I thought, you can take it again in college, you already have some baseline, so then they both had to take it in college, and nothing is awful. Hey, and so, you know, just encouraging our kids to stick their necks out there, but they're so. Correct, you know what I mean, so, that was for you then. I know what you're like. I'm just teasing. But, you know, those are, those are the things, I, you know, we all learn through our own lenses and I know everybody's learns here, so.
I think it's also important for us to say. It's not either a pass or fail in these fields.
Right.
Cause if learning is a process, then that means that. If I'm not thinking critically as this freshman. But doesn't mean by the time I'm a senior, I can improve on it, still. We, we need to be able to identify what is going, what activities, programming, what offers. Offerings we need to add in order to help those students. How do we identify them as? Lacking in the critical thinking category, and then what, how do we motivate them? Into taking calculus to become. A more critical thinker in years, why is this important? Because this is the, this is the area that they were lacking in, that is one of our.
Ben, for instance, he said collaborations is, is weakness, and he may have a deck without weakness, it's something he would want.
Yeah.
Right, and so. This, this will know that. Right? Cause if the school knows he identifies that, unless we're been in those situations, we're even aware how to collaborate, right? I mean, I think that's how the piece starts to come together.
And that's one thing, the high school teachers during that last three days of PD started working and. Working on in their small departmental groups and discussing whole group and then broken down into departmental groups is. How do we take these skills or how can we identify a few and weave them into our instruction and class and pedagogy? So, for instance. Maybe, you know, maybe I'm, we're gonna start with collaboration, how can we within our pedagogy? How can we begin to put kids into groups? And as we're teaching, you know, and that's part of our curriculum is that collaboration that we're putting. Uh, kids in, into, and so that, those are things that they're gonna start weaving into their instruction and providing those opportunities. Throughout the day.
Having that self-reflection or self-awareness. Of. Depending on bedding, and if, if collaboration is the, is the thing. Then creating a goal and then. Everybody else that has similar goal.
Yeah.
That, that a wellness.
They're all.
That's one way to make them collaborate. Okay, any other thoughts on this?
Well, the work.
Ben and I will get. This from a policy standpoint, and we'll take a look at and see if there's any additional questions, otherwise you'll get policy updates for the two. Mission and vision are policies. And so. As I, as Davis reminded us, uh, we didn't. The last time the board approved them, we actually didn't go through the formal process of, I, he sent them us, he sent us these, and it's like. The first thing I noticed is like, these aren't the ones I read every month, so we updated them and approved them at the board meeting, but didn't formally change their policy, so this time we'll get them. Changed so they reflect, uh, it's just, it's an extra reading, um, so we'll, we'll start that process next month. Uh, next up on the agenda is the superintendent goals. Um, as we talked, we're, we're at that point in the year, uh, and so. I just shared those with Davis like minutes before the meeting, so it's not really a good opportunity to chat about them too much. Other than to say he has the goals, the board has set out, uh, he's gonna take them from what we sent him, he'll put it in his nice form that the state says we have to use. Because the state in its infinite wisdom says you shall do this and we will comply with the law, and then he'll put in his, uh. Uh. What he wants to do to kind of demonstrate, uh. His progress towards those, and then he will share that with the board, uh, for feedback, and then we'll move that forward, so. It'll be in place here before we, uh, get too far into the next fiscal year, so. Um. That's what we got on that front. And. My computer died way too early in this meeting, um, and so I've been doing the rest of the week on my phone, so maybe pull the agenda back up. More learning, we will be more learning next month, uh, we're gonna go back to doing a few of the, uh.
ISB.
ISB, uh, learning at the board table since, since. Not February, since July is normally a very short board meeting, uh, we'll do one or two of those, uh, they take about twenty minutes. Um, so that'll be a good opportunity for us to get a, a little bit of, uh, collaborative time together, uh, that was on that thing here, summer collaboration, yeah? And get one of those skills, practice one of those skills, uh. Next month.
There's not a whole lot for next month, so we can maybe do a couple.
That's what I was gonna say, they not have a couple of them. Um. And then we'll move on from there, and then. Talking points. Ben, you wanna go first or last?
I thought the three points were good, um. What was going on, all the, uh. Those skills for success as well, and I thought, what, uh.
Brilliant, thank you, Ben, Cassie.
So, two years in. I mean, I got last year on this time, is significantly improved, so I appreciate.
Good use of time. Jamie.
Um, there, there was a lot in this meeting, um, I like the strategic plan that it's. A little bit more simplified and simple and not kind of all over the place. There will be some im- implementation things and figuring out how to, um. Pinpoint. The skills and improve on those, but I really like. I really like this. And how, you know, I like how it's presented and that it's. Straight into the point.
Ben.
I thought the data was good, it's always revealing, you know, and, and, um. You know, I, I just appreciate everybody's willingness to be open about it, not try to hide it. Two by one. I think point would be how much effort do we put into high SASS at all? It doesn't really give us much. It gives us this big view, but we can't even dig down to see where we're at, you know what I mean, so. I mean, I think that's something to talk about in the future, but, because I don't know what it gives us. You know what I mean, and so, but I think that was very evident today, because when we asked the questions, we have no answers, so, um, but I.
And all the data is not out yet.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, but even, even when it's out, we can't get to what we do.
Not efficient anyway.
Right, exactly.
It's been a couple weeks.
Yeah, and so, I mean, those are things, but I, I mean, just that we have a variety of different assessments. It kind of grabbed kids and the fact that we're expanding, what I call that, what's MW.
The company is.
Okay, I just noticed map testing, because it just, it's a, it's a, um. For my wife, she likes it, because it's above level, so kids are succeeding, they can just be feeding, so you really know where they are. And so it, it puts everyone where they are, and then, that's most important, all of us is that, then we can measure that, no matter where the kids are, the thing, they're moving. And so I think, and that's the, that's the role of the district, I think, in my spirit.
Hello. Yeah, the day was good, I think it's also nice to see, uh, obviously the admins all getting together, it was a great year, but. Kind of stepping up and, all right, what's next year, right? Not being complacent, but. What we gotta do, and it sounds like there's a lot of planning going on, so. It's summer, but there's a lot of work going into next year, so it's pretty exciting.
Few things for me, one of which is that. Despite all the stuff I had to sign, we spent the minimal, minimal amount of time on the actual, um. Administrative side of, of this, and I, you know, spend the time on the data and the. And the strategic plan was, was enjoyable, and then, uh, I, I guess I enjoyed the most the discussion at the end when we talked about the strategic plan. Cause that's what we're charged with is looking forward, I, I think that we had a very good and open discussion. And it's, it's enjoyable to get to sit with you guys and, and have those discussions, I wish there were more people to hear those discussions, but, uh. At least we got to have them, and Ben will get to tell people that we actually talk about things that are important. With that, the next board meeting is July twenty ninth at seven fifteen in the morning. June twenty ninth at seven fifteen in the morning. Uh, next regular board meeting is in July, July twentieth, um, central office boardroom. I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Motion by Coon, second by Lustwell, and favor signified by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion very unanimously, where?